Good evening. The January tenth, 2017 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. I would like to ask members of the audience to please remove their hats. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the front table. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call roll.
This is Nancy Stacy, District One. Mr. Bobby James, District Three.
Here.
Angie Boynton, District Four.
Here.
Mrs. Beth McCall, District Two.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District Five.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Lake, Board Attorney.
Here.
Mrs. Judy Zanetti, Public Education Officer, please introduce the School Related Employee of the Year who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Well, good evening Superintendent, Mayor, and School Board members. As always, it's a pleasure for me to be here. I always get to come and do something fun and positive, and then I leave and let you all stay and do the hard work. So, Dr. Mayer joined us at our School Related Employee of the Year luncheon, but Board members, I know you had a training that you all had to be at that day, and gee, I know you love going to trainings rather than a celebratory luncheon, but we are sorry that you missed it. But this evening, I am going to introduce you to Marion County's School Related Employee of the Year. And from working in our schools, you all know how important our school-related employees are. They are those folks that tutor our kids, that translate foreign languages for them, particularly Spanish. Those are our employees that make sure that our children get to school safely every day. They make sure our schools are clean and safe. They make sure our computers are running. They make sure that our Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted. And this evening, representing Eighth Street Elementary School and Marion County, I'm going to introduce you to Kelly Wyndham. Kelly, would you come up, please? Kelly's been with Marion County Public Schools for three years, and she is the receptionist at Eighth Street Elementary. Her responsibilities include everything from greeting and assisting visitors, answering the phone, helping to register new students, handling volunteer applications in V-Soft, planning and preparing for school assemblies, keeping a roster of transportation changes, and she also helps prepare for class projects and helps teachers with everything from grading papers to making sure that they have a much-needed restroom break. Kelly does everything right down to offering a student part of her lunch if they come in late and hungry that morning. Kelly has two of her own children at Eighth Street Elementary School, so as a parent, she treats all of our students the way she wants her students to be treated. Ms. Wyndham is currently working on her bachelor's degree in social work, and she hopes to continue her employment with Marion County Public Schools in a new role upon graduating. So I am pleased and honored to present to you tonight Marion County School Related Employee of the Year, Kelly Wyndham.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the
To the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stand. Thank you for inviting me. They told me I was gonna have to say a little bit today. I came across a prayer that I found, and I think everybody can kind of relate to when dealing with students, which we all have at some point dealt with students. It goes like this. It says, "Help me be grateful for the students who like to learn and feel challenged by those who don't. Help me be thankful for the students' love and understand those I'm learning to love. Help me be motivated by the students who learn to think and be committed to those afraid to try. Help me be inspired by the students who chose right over wrong and be patient with those who lack the courage. Help me be gentle with the students who make mistakes and learn to forgive the difficult child. Help me be wise with the students building character and be unwavering with those without conscience. Help me be committed to the students who are responsible and be persistent with those who value nothing. Help me be calm in the midst of violence and model self-control in the midst of anger. Help me be faithful in the days of discouragement and be dedicated to make one child smile." This is just something that I would take with day by day when I'm at school, seeing everybody in the morning, so I just wanted to share. And thank you.
Anyone like to say anything, or you're good? I would just stand for one second. I just want to personally thank you. When Ms. Zanetti was describing what you do, I was visualizing it, and there is plus more that you're doing. And you are the first person that, when the students come in or parents, you're their smile, and you're probably everything that you just read. And I could also envision those teachers coming down, and you still smiling, and you're taking care of all their needs, because they can be very demanding, and so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Let me just share. I'd just like to just share this with you now. The most important thing that you've said tonight to me was that you have a plan and you want to continue your education. The greatest impact that kids face in our schools are our teachers, and hopefully, you will be part of that team to make the teachers more successful. I am very pleased that you're here. And Judy, congratulations for doing a good job again and bringing somebody that we can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to say good luck with your studies. Work hard, and we look forward to having you back here one day again, maybe as one of our Golden Apple teachers.
Thank you.
We're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move along. Dr. Mayer.
Thank you. I recommend approval of the agenda for
And the motion passed five zero. Mr. John Curley, Vanguard High School Principal, would you like to share special recognition regarding the Kingdom of the Sun basketball tournament?
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Mayer, thank you very much for inviting us this evening. In a moment, I'll introduce our athletic director, excuse me, and our coach that are standing behind me tonight. I had to reintroduce myself to our athletic director, who I do not typically recognize in a shirt and tie. He does not come dressed every day, but he does look good, so I know that he wants to be recognized for that. Thank you very much for having us here this evening. I've been in Marion County Public Schools for a long time now, almost twenty years. I coached basketball, and I ran many tournaments, but I've never been invited to address the board about a tournament, so I'm very impressed by that. And I'm gonna turn it over to the coach here in a second, and he's gonna share a lot of facts with you about the tournament. I think you're gonna be extremely impressed with some of the things that he has to say and the impact that this tournament has on the community. But one of the points that I wanted to bring up, two things. First of all, I wanted to commend our custodial staff. For the first time in years, we got a number of comments throughout the week to our custodial staff, and specifically their manager, Jim Lamont, in organizing that group, and they just did a tremendous job. And many people that really had never been there before talked about the cleanliness of the facility, and we were just really impressed about that. And I want them to know how much of an impact that makes on the school district. And also, the length of time that this tournament takes. This tournament runs for four days, and it doesn't run completely all day for four days. In fact, the last day, we don't start until about noon, and we run about till nine o'clock that night. But in those four days, each one of these people behind me, and of course, all the people that help them out, put in fifty-seven total individual hours per person in running that tournament over four days. So there's a lot of time and effort, and that's just on the week of the tournament. That certainly doesn't have anything to do with putting the tournament together and planning it. I also want to thank the district administration. Again, like I mentioned, I've been doing this for a long time. I've run a lot of tournaments. I've coached in a lot of tournaments. I've never gotten a message from the superintendent at nine-thirty in the morning, the morning of the beginning of the tournament, saying, "Is everything okay? I'll be there later this evening." And then having other members of the district administration come and help us out. I want to share one story, if I could, with you that impressed me a lot. We had to get some equipment into the gym first thing in the morning, and we had to take a stanchion out in between the two swinging double doors. They're meant to come out, and we took them out to get some equipment into the gym. And we really had a difficult time getting that back in. Our athletic director worked for a long time trying to get it back in. I went over there and tried to work. We could not get that stanchion back in between those two double doors. And Dr. Hamm came in a little while later, and he was sitting up in the stands by himself, and somebody told me he was there. So I found him, and I walked over, and I sat down with him and started speaking to him. And I said, "Well, you know, he's the deputy superintendent of operations. I should tell him that we're having an issue with the door." So I told him, and he proceeded to take out his phone, and I thought, well, he's gonna notify somebody in his crew to be able to come out and handle that situation. He said, "Well, let's go down and take a look at it." So we went down and took a look at it, and we fiddled with that thing for probably about another fifteen minutes, he and I. I had to go leave and take care of something else, and I left for about, I don't know, ten, fifteen minutes or so. And I had come back, he had gone out to his car, got in his toolbox. This is not a made-up story. This can be verified by other
[laughing]
Got his toolbox, came back, and by the time I had gotten there, he had gotten it back in. He had but one request from me at that point, and that was, "Where could I wash my hands?" That is a good literal and figurative example. In other words, he got his hands dirty doing the job as a deputy superintendent. We probably called somebody else in and do it. And from that point on, through the rest of the tournament, we had people coming in and out in the district administration. Dr. Mayer was there. Don't mean to embarrass you, but the first comment that she made to me when she came into the gym was, "I just want to let you know, I don't like basketball."
Shh, Mr. Curley. Trying to change her mind.
But I will tell you
The tournament did change my mind.
It absolutely changed her mind, because I was sat with her, and for about the next two and a half hours, she was sitting there. I could tell on her face that she definitely enjoyed it, so we made a believer out of her. But I want Coach Budnick to come up and speak as well a little bit about his years here with the Kingdom of the Sun, and then Coach Small.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having us. This is my fourteenth year in the district, the longest I've been anywhere. I've been, it's my thirty-fifth year in four school districts. And I've enjoyed it here. I've been part of the Kingdom for fourteen years. I kind of fell into it when I first came in as a football and baseball coach. Had my hands in everything. And the thing that has hit me the most about the Kingdom is it's not just a community event. We have people that come in from Ohio every year. We have people that come up from the villages, because we'll have seven or eight different states represented. And they come out, no matter who's playing. Our locals come out, middle of the night, watch a game. It could be cold, could be hot, could be raining. They're gonna show up at Vanguard. And again, to follow up on Mr. Curley, you know, it was nice having Dr. Hamm, Dr. Mayer, and Woody come by, and some of the other district folks hang out for a while and watch basketball and see how we do our operations. And I do most of the grunt work. I won't tell you otherwise, I'm the mule. The one that did all the background work is our basketball coach, Phillip Small, as well as run his team during the tournament. So, next up, Phillip Small.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, and thank you for recognizing us, for having this tournament. When I was hired at Vanguard as the basketball coach, it was bestowed upon me that at some point, you're going to run the Kingdom of the Sun. And Coach Haley did a good job of starting it and building it into what it became. This was our forty-third year. It's something that's been special to not only Ocala, Marion County, and surrounding counties for forty-three years, and something that our fans really look forward to. We bring in sixteen teams from around the country each year. This year, we had seven teams from out of state, as far away as Bronx, New York, and Madison, Wisconsin. We had Ohio, we had two Georgia teams. We had our first team from North Carolina ever. I took over kind of running it full-tilt about four years ago. The Kingdom had had glory days and done a lot of wonderful things, and was struggling a little bit financially. And I met with some of you all, and I met with some of my administration at the time, and what could we do? It was kind of on its last leg. And for me, it's not something that I want to let go under my watch. I want it to be special, because it's supposed to be special, and it's something that we've had for a long time. We've been able to breathe a little life into it. We've been in the black financially the last four years. I see our attendance starts to rise. We had over twenty-five-hundred tickets sold this year. I spoke with the Ocala-Marion County Visitors Convention Bureau earlier today, and they do a study every year. This year, the estimated economic impact for our county was eight-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-one-hundred dollars. The teams that come in, the money that's spent in hotels that time of year is typically slow for Ocala that time of year. The hotels just clamor to have us. Right now, we have an outstanding relationship with the Ocala Hilton, who takes care of a lot of stuff for us. We've started to get a lot of corporate sponsorship from the community back involved. The teams are getting better. We're getting more fans. The sponsorships are getting better, and the quality of play on the floor is getting better. We're gonna continue to make improvements. We're gonna continue to bust our tail. I had a coach ask me from Ohio, he said, "How long does it take to put this thing together?" I have no idea. I just know that, right now, I'll be working on paying the bills and finishing up everything. That'll take until, really, April. But I already have invitations out for teams next year. I can't stop worrying about what players we want, what teams we want, what sponsors, making sure we're taking care of them. I want a product that our fans can be proud of. I want a product that our students can be proud of, our administration, our district, and something that Ocala, Marion County can come to and just be proud of and be special to us. And I'm not gonna let it go, and I just want it to continue to grow and be special. And again, I want to thank you guys for letting us do it.
Thank you. Boyd?
Go ahead.
Well, Mr. Curley, I can attest that Dr. Mayer knew that I was off watching the Chattanooga Mox basketball during the Kingdom, and she called me to tell me that she really enjoyed the basketball game. So I think maybe we've made a fan. Coach Small, thank you for all you do. Basketball's a huge part of our life, and the Kingdom was a very large part of our life for many years. So thank you for continuing to make it successful, and we hope for it to go a long time. And Mr. Budnick, for, somebody has to be the mule. And, you know, it doesn't work if we don't have all those logistics in place. So thank you all for this wonderful gift to our community. Thank you.
Mr. James?
I guess I'm the senior person here in reference to this. I think Woody Climbos is over there. He's been around a long time, too. You know, going back to the glory days, and I just wanted to say, thank you for the job that you all are doing. But by the same token, I just wanted to acknowledge Jim Haley, Mr. Murphy, and all those people that really make the thing go. And as I think about what we're talking about, I was at the tournament, by the way, so you may have missed me. I was there. And I was sitting there with Mary Sue Rich, our city council, and she said the only time that she go to a basketball attend events is when she comes to the Kingdom of the Sun. And that's one of the things I just wanted to say to all the people that have supported the Kingdom of the Sun. I think, Mr. Viannella, you played in the Kingdom of the Sun, you know, as a player. So he played in the Kingdom of the Sun. There's a lot of history and tradition that go along with that. And when you all had the opportunity to name the court after Coach Haley, you saw the quality of his work and the way the community really feel about him by the returning, return of so many of the players that graced the walls there. They call him chief, so you'll always have that shadow, because the chief will always be around, and he was there as well. I want to congratulate you guys for having a good tournament. Very good. Thank you.
Miss Stacy?
Well, I knew you were gonna call us out for not coming. I would've gotten there. So next year, I'm gonna get there. I've never been a basketball fan. My boys play football and soccer, but I will say, you can give me a little kudos, because Dr. Mayer was calling me every once in a while, telling me what was going on. So I was sort of there. Does that count? Okay, thanks.
Okay. You know, I kind of like Miss Stacy. You did call us out on it, so I am gonna make a commitment to you that next year that I will attend it, and I'm gonna look forward to seeing what you are doing, because you already committed and said you're already thinking about getting those tickets out and which teams and stuff, so I'm excited to see what you have to do there. And I just learned Saturday evening what traveling was by someone that's a huge Kentucky fan, and I was like, "Explain traveling to me. I thought you could walk some," and he explained that, "No, you can't." So I'll learn about that and come visit. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, oh, excuse me. Dr. Mayer?
Gentlemen, thank you. First of all, thank you for being patient with me as I learned the game, and it was fun. As Miss Stacy, I share that with Miss Stacy, is that we are football moms, but, oh my goodness, what an exciting game that was. And what made it the excitement, what added to the excitement, was just the professionalism of the whole event, how well-organized it was. And sir, your team is to be commended. What amazing young men, what respect they have for you. That was so obvious, and just the interaction, and what respect they had for each other, the environment, the other teams. Truly, you made us proud. All of you made us proud, and I thank you for that. And you've made a believer of basketball in me, so thank you for that as well. So, truly, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I will now ask the board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. King. In compliance with Florida Sunshine law, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to school district operations. School board has adopted these procedures to ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table near the door to this room. As Mrs. King told you earlier, public speaker forms are also located on the table. These forms were due to the school board's assistant no later than 5:40 PM. Please keep that in mind for future board meetings. Mrs. King will call tonight's speakers prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes. When a speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees must conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks, slanderous statements, and profanity are strictly prohibited. Also, unsolicited commercial solicitations are also prohibited. Matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, will be scheduled after the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. Also, keep in mind for future meetings, the speakers may use handouts or AV presentations, but only if they're provided to the board assistant at least forty-eight hours before the meeting. They must also have a total length of five minutes or less. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying reference to or identification of other students and/or their families is strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Madam Chair, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Ms. Blockcutter?
Good evening. How are you today? My name is Carolyn Torrey. I reside at twelve-oh-two Southeast Fourteenth Avenue, Ocala, Florida, three-four-four-seven-one. And go Knights! I understand that you are reviewing the FERPA, the Code of Conduct, and what I have clearly found is that there is an extreme violation, and my attorney had spoke to me, and you'll never find that I ever signed the Code of Conduct, because there's a violation, and that's a number three, about attorneys exempting them from the FERPA law. And I've highlighted that, and I would hope that your attorney would review that and consider revising that. I also want to find out, and this is going back in history, why my child's grades were being discussed with your newly-hired ex-principal and a convicted felon parent. And if you read this email, you'll absolutely see that the grades of my child hadn't even been released to me, yet she is of knowledge, and she's reporting it to the ex-principal. My child wasn't in the class, wasn't even in the school, and yet, why wasn't anything done about the violations of my child's records? I'll be happy to provide you copies of that, so you can review it and come up with answers. I also received information that nearly seven thousand of my son's records were transferred without my consent or knowledge to a third attorney. I've never signed consent, I had no knowledge, and they had no right to do this. I'm hoping that you go through this and find out, get down to the bottom of this, of why the violations are so massive. The other item is, I have some concerns, because one of the schools, to which a magnet school, a parent advocate had noted in some of the documents that the disabled were being excluded from that school. She did file a state complaint about that that clearly showed the documentation at the school that they were removing the disabled from that school. They also went to the yearbook pictures, and we found that the minorities were being excluded from the gifted program. And then we did further examination. We found out that the, also, the blue ribbon reports supported that, and the deposition supported with your former principal at that school. We filed a complaint with OCR for equal rights for the minorities. For that, I was attacked. My children were harmed, and the violations were in the hundreds. This is really, you need to learn this, because some of you are unaware of what has transpired. But it's concerning to me, because some of the people that were involved in this are now back at the school system. That's very concerning to me. I was notified that they were reviewing the Code of Conduct, and that's why I wanted to bring up the FERPA violation, so that you can have a chance to correct it. If not, I'll have to file with FERPA. I have, I would like to have a retrieval of my son's records and why my son's records were transferred to people who had no legitimate educational use.
Here's the email, so my son's grades are being discussed. Here's the disabled that are being excluded. Complaint filed with state. This will attach the name of the person who sent the emails, so that you can find them. This is your former attorney saying a dishonest investigation on my son. This is your former attorney stating where my son's records have been disseminated without There's a dishonest investigation issues. And then here's the former OCR complaint that was signed by the former superintendent regarding the minorities being denied access to the gifted program.
Ms. Blockcutter, do we have any other speakers?
Ms. Loretta Pompey Jenkins?
Good evening.
Loretta Pompey Jenkins, 2200 Northwest 24th Road, Ocala, Florida, 34475. I'm here tonight to extend and encourage a special invitation to our elected school board members and anyone else in the audience also to participate in the 2017 Dr. Martin Luther King Commemorative Celebration. Iri Biffey and I are part of the Celebrative Committee that's working to make sure that the legacy of Dr. King does not die. We, every year, sponsor several activities, and these activities involve students of the Marion County Public Schools. They will be participating, and hopefully, they will be in the march. And we had, our first thing that we had was a youth day, and that was just for children. That was this past Saturday at the Howard Academy Community Center, and we had lots of students out there performing. Now, I have brochures here. I hope I'm within whatever the attorney said about passing out things, but this is just a flyer that will, that lists the activities and the day and the time and everything. And this is an invitation for our elected school board members to participate, and especially on the day of the march. That is something, it's only a mile from downtown to the Martin Luther King Complex. It's only, it said it's only a mile, but it's a short distance. And hopefully, all of you are capable of walking that short distance and will come out and join us on that date. Oh, I still got two minutes, Iri.
Real quick, what Ms. Jenkins says is absolutely correct. This is our 32nd Dr. Martin Luther King Celebration, and we hope that you all will come out and join us. Dr. Meyer, there will be an opportunity to speak there in the park right after the march. Most of the dignitaries come out, and they say a two or three minute, and, you know, just to encourage people to come out and participate. We thank you. We hope that we have an opportunity to see you all.
Oh, there's two minutes and five seconds left for us. On Saturday morning, Saturday morning, we have our Memorial Prayer Breakfast. That prayer breakfast is held there at the Ed Krosky Center, and on that flyer, you will see that advertisement about the prayer breakfast. We have speakers, no, a speaker, and participation by students from our public schools. And there's a very minimal donation of $10 for a ticket for the prayer breakfast. Hopefully, I will see some faces, not like the Kingdom of the Sun, but we hope that we see some faces of our elected school board members at some of these activities. No, all of these activities.
Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers? That's it. That's it. Okay, we're going to move along then. May I have a motion to adopt new board policy 5.65 EpiPen Auto Injector Devices in schools? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall and seconded by Ms. Boynton.
This board, thank you. This board policy has been created to comply with the School Access to Emergency Epinephrine Act that requires school boards amend their existing policies to list the emergency response agencies in the school district, as well as authorizes school districts to purchase and maintain a supply of EpiPen Auto Injector Devices. During your discussion portion, if you have specific questions, Dr. Hamm is prepared to address those for you.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this board policy? Okay, the board, is there any, was there, oh, about the, if you want to come to the podium.
I have been reading about the fact that, let me give my name first. My name's Carolyn Torrey. I live at 1202 Southeast Fourteenth Avenue. Obviously, I know the cost of EpiPens has gone skyrocketed, huge. And I really think, I'm kind of very disappointed in the pharmaceuticals who have basically just slightly reformulated, and to me, in my opinion, price gouged those that are the victims that need this. And is there a possibility that we can talk to pharmaceuticals about donating to schools? Is that a possibility? Would that be a violation? Is that okay?
Well, that would have to be something we would probably have to address with our attorney. Usually, it's the parents that would, you know, bring in the EpiPens, so that responsibility is on them. But I'll have Mr. Lake look into it.
Just, you know, I do know somebody that has, is a member high up in one of the pharmaceutical companies, and I was just wondering if there was a possibility of maybe them somehow donating, you know, something there so that the kids that do need it. I'm just trying to come up with options. Thank you.
Board, is there any discussion?
No.
All those in favor signify by saying aye, and those that oppose, like sign. The motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to adopt revised board policy 4.40 Extracurricular Program? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. James, seconded by Ms. McCall. Dr. Meyer?
This board policy has been revised to reflect the board's desire to allow middle school students to participate in interscholastic sports.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this revised board policy? Board members? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those that oppose, like sign. And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda 6, excuse me, C-8.1 through C-13.2 as submitted? May I have a motion and a second? Moved by Ms. Boynton, seconded by Ms. McCall. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, and those that oppose, like sign. And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve a new position to the 2016-17 Staffing Plan and a new job classification description, Director of Family, School, and Community Engagement? May I have a motion and a second? Moved by Ms. Stacy, seconded by Ms. Boynton. Ms., Dr. Meyer?
Thank you. Dr. Hamm would like to present the board with some rationale and data to support this position.
Chairperson King, board members. My name is Robert Hamm. I live at 2480 Southeast 38th Street in Ocala. It's my pleasure to bring to you this evening a revised job description for a Director of Engagement of our Families, Community, and Schools. I owe a particular debt of gratitude to Ms. Boynton, who as Chair of the Board directed a study and a committee, appointed a committee, to look into ways that we might better reach our communities in certain targeted stakeholder groups to improve communication between the schools and parents who perhaps weren't as available to the technology to be able to interface with the schools, and perhaps were single parents and had other limitations on how they were able to leverage their positions to engage the schools. Mrs. Stacy was a member of that committee, and we appreciate your work as well. Two weeks ago, we offered a job description, and there were some questions about that prior to the board meeting, and I spoke with board members who came to me with questions, and Mr. James particularly had some concerns about possible redundancies in the job description as it might relate to our Public Affairs Officer. We have revised the job description to make more clear the line of demarcation between those functions of communication for the superintendent and expressing the vision and the mission and the core values of the district, and those of this position, which will engage targeted stakeholder groups in an effort to correct some of those deficiencies that we presented to you not just two weeks ago in terms of shortcomings within the district educational results, but also at this most recent board work session we had on Tuesday, where we highlighted some issues with English language learners as well as special needs students. We feel that this possession, this position is appropriate to help us do a better job of reaching those stakeholder groups. I know as a board, you have two overwhelming concerns, in that you are the authority to approve our budget and also the staffing plan. And our obligation to you is that we will execute the 1617 budget with fidelity. We won't go over that budget. And additionally, we will deliver to you next month a proposed staffing plan for 1718 that will be both more lean and more efficient and more effective than the one that we have now. As we move toward doing that, there are going to be some changes that we need to do now. I know Dr. Grantham highlighted this during his discussions with you, that we're now looking at about 40 days before FSA testing, and in the case of student writing, about 26, 27 instructional days before that portion of the ELA is actually given to our students. Whatever we can do now to leverage current resources through reallocation and realignment, we're going to do to give us a better result and start that move toward improvement. This position is going to be an important part of that new staffing plan as well, and when taken in toto, it's going to show a realignment of our priorities and be completely in line with Dr. Meyer's plan to put more resources where we need them, which is to help students. Currently, we have 19 220-day homeschool liaison positions. We have four 260-day positions. We have one vacant position. And we also have our HIPPI program, which is our outreach for home instruction for parents of preschool youngsters. We know that early childhood learning is a critical need in order to bring them into pre-K and kindergarten, ready to learn, and we get much better results by the third and fourth grade when we do those sorts of things. That would also be a part of this. I will tell you that in terms of funding, we have applied for a DOE grant, and we've had some very good guidance from DOE on preparation of that grant. And the creation of this position is one of the specific requirements of that grant, to have someone to manage the parent-family-community-engagement piece. So we're delighted that it should not create an additional funding burden on the district, and we have every expectation that we will receive that grant, and we will expect to know in early March and move forward then to list the position and fill it. Subject to your questions. How may I be of assistance?
Mr. James?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to make some statements in reference to this. We tell pass those out. I really don't have anything to say to Dr. Hamm, and Dr. Hamm, I really appreciate you and your candor with me when I met with you in your office. But, board, I will ask, pass that down to Dr. Meyer. One of the things I'm going to say to you more than anything else, board, I would really consider this if we were to table this issue until we have a board retreat. And let me explain to you why I'm saying we need to really have a board retreat. I just handed out a copy of Hillsborough County's family and engagement person there, and it's really specific, and it really tells us exactly what they're doing in Hillsborough County. One of the things I am saying to you, this is not an emergency. We are not really clear on the role of our school board and our superintendent in what we're doing. And let me explain why. We had an emergency session just recently where we brought in some additional principals back. We had, we just had a session where we had a hearing, an employee hearing, along with the superintendents. We had an opportunity to meet the superintendent's attorney. I never met the attorney until I walked in the door. I had never seen her until I walked in the door, and some of you may have. I haven't. I didn't. Okay, now when I look at this, look at us adding a Director of Community and Family Relations, we need it. I don't have a problem with needing it. But I do feel that we need to discuss the direction we're going. One of the things that was interesting about it was it said it will expand, or something about the superintendent's vision. It should be the school board's vision combined. You all may have had an opportunity to sit and talk with the superintendent individually, but have we had an opportunity to sit and talk with the superintendent as a collective board? Guys, we need a retreat because I'm simply telling you, we're getting things stacked up on us, and we don't know the big picture. Will this thing, and I'm going to ask Dr. Grantham, Dr. Grantham, do you need this tomorrow, or can we get a retreat and we sit down and see how this thing will affect the employees that we have in our district, good or bad? Do we need, do you have to have this tomorrow?
Do you want me to address that?
Address it. If you got to have it tomorrow, I want to know.
Before you do that, Mr. James, first, let me say this to Nancy, for Nancy Stacey. In 2014, I chaired, I was chairing him. I came and asked, I asked Mr. Stacey and Nancy, and I asked them to, I wanted her to chair a group of women, men from the out farm, from the whole county. I was worried, we needed to work about our, the family. That was something that, it took over, over in a year. I looked around at the, Mr. Lake, who came, we came to the first time that they, Mr., excuse me, when Nancy came in and she brought those women, the women and men that came in and wanted to know to work for the families. And I think, I think when you have, with the children, that's the one other thing that the children needed to know, that the family. And I think, if we did it in 2014, and they came, when they came to our, to the board, they had a minute, a meeting around and talked to all of us. to our, to the Board, they had a minute, a meeting around and talked to all of us. It was on, it was on, excuse me again, it was, it was, they did a report on it and they, and I was very, had the concerns that they had for two thousand and fourteen. We're now in two thousand and seventeen and it's something, when, when should be talking about the family?
Let me finish.
And I understand you're talking and we, and we put, we put a, when they came, they, it was very, they came together and then we knew three years that we would come together and put down a job. We, they put the information on the job then, you know, so I think, I think it's, I understand what you, some of the things what you're talking about when I, the plan, our pledge, excuse me, top plan, but I think, I think it's, at least we need to have this, Mr. James. I know.
I'm going to come back to you in just a minute. Ms. McCall, you have something?
Yeah, I have some concerns. First of all, I don't believe this position should be at the salary level that it's being, that it's at. To me, it's more of a program manager. Secondly, I have a problem with pursue funding opportunities through grants and community partnerships. I don't want any confusion with our Public Education Foundation and they pursue funding through community partnerships and they do that very, very well. So I would, that would need to be removed for me because our foundation, that's their role, is to pursue funding through community partnerships. I also really believe that if the leadership at the schools are the right leadership at the schools, and I think we're beginning to align that, the parents need a relationship with the school, not with a district person. The relationship with those families should be with that school and not with a district person. I can't support it like it is. I certainly can't support it with the pursue funding opportunities through grants and community partnerships. I cannot support it at the salary level that it's at and I think we need to wait until it comes back at a better salary and in the new, and in the new staffing plan.
Ms. Stacy?
Well, Ms. McCall, you mentioned the foundation. I've gone through the Public Policy Institute that was kind of a collaboration of the foundation, Mrs. Zanetti and actually Dr. Mayor and different ones were involved in putting the Public Policy Institute recommendations. It's from two thousand twelve thirteen. We're now four years later. To study a promise to the future. This has been on the shelf somewhere, on a dusty shelf. This is what kind of brought, I think, Mrs. Boynton to the point where, you know, we talked about this and to say, let's move on this because this has now been sitting on the shelf for four years. If we're not going to use the recommendations of the foundation employee and do the things that this recommends, then I don't really know why we even need the foundation if we're just, you know, if it's just business partnerships. I'm going to read a little bit about it. It says in here, the very, one of the first recommendations, it talks about social environment. Parent volunteering, empowering individuals to be their own advocate and becoming change agents for communities. The end results may lead to improvements in personal and community health as well as academic success of children. It goes on to talking about key findings that this public policy plan found and these were business people that were brought in here from the community, inconvenience with their time, they were willing to give us their time and I have a whole list of people that were involved in this, coming to meetings, just like I had meetings on the parent involvement piece, week after week after week, to major inconvenience to the people that I pulled in here. I had some, I had district employees and they would come at night to these meetings and we would, we put this together. We came up with a plan. We introduced this plan a year ago and after working hard and the School Board unanimously supported, let's moving forward this. The newspaper, editorial after editorial and story after story about the positive effects of what we were coming up with, with this group that Mrs. Boynton had charged me to put together. And we based a lot of it on this, this old four-year study that talks about, this study, this was to improve academic stuff. Everything in it's about parents. Poverty, uneducated, twenty percent in Marion County don't have diplomas. And what really was staggering to me was sixty-three percent of youth suicides are from fatherless homes, five times the average. Ninety percent of all homeless and runaway children from fatherless homes. We need to bring these parents and these dads and everybody in and the demise of the neighborhood schools and loss of community affects parental involvement. This is a huge program. It will probably be the largest in the state and nothing like it, as I envision it to become. I went on, they had a speaker to come to their meeting and this gentleman was David Lawrence's speech, given in May of two thousand thirteen. If children were a real priority was what his speech was called and as you read through the two pages of the speech, he comes down to a portion and he says, "The most thought-provoking article I've read in recent times appeared in the New York Times. There's Sean Riordan, a professor of education and sociology at Stanford, wrote. There was a lot of discussion these days about investing in teachers and improving teacher quality, but improving the quality of our parenting and of our children's earliest environments may be even more important. Fundamentally, it means rethinking our still persistent notion that education problems should be solved by schools alone." So I don't believe, that's where we disagree, Ms. McCall, that the principals can take care of this because this is a huge study that shows schools cannot take care of this alone. And I'll close with a statement right out of the public policy paper, put together by the team that I've shared with you and it's a statement from Anne Frank. Among the most poignant, poignant figures in history, wrote this in the years of the Holocaust, "How wonderful it is that nobody needs to wait a single moment before starting to improve the world. I say let's vote on this tonight and move forward with it."
Mr. James?
Okay, now, we have heard a lot of emotional things, but I'm going to go right back to where I was in terms of this. I asked you, I asked the Board to table this until we have a chance to discuss it, whether we get a work session or get a retreat tomorrow because you and I know that we need a retreat and a work session so we can sit and go over this thing. If you look at our district strategic plan, it clearly states it's out of sync and for us to take a minute and some time to really go over this. Now, we can schedule a work session anytime, but this is not going to change when I say work session, a retreat. So we can clearly understand the direction that we are going. And if you say that all of this is going, if we pass this tonight, it's going to take care of all of this tomorrow, it's not. But I am telling you this, the strategic plan is, and I read Dr. Mayor's thing, her thing where it's under, under review at this time or being updated. Guys, all I'm telling you is simply this. When I look at what we're talking about in terms of this, we look at our staffing plan and we look at the number of directors that we have listed under Dr. Grantham. All of those people have various degrees and most of them have Ed Leadership degrees. All I'm saying as a Board, we need to take our time and go to a Board Retreat and look at this thing and see how it will affect the various programs that we have. We have, when I look at this, I've looked at the fact that we have been doing a lot of these things for a long time. A couple of more weeks ain't going to kill it. But I do know that we do have problems in the sense that it will cross over into various groups and you will say, well, it's not going to cause a problem. It will cause, it will cause a problem. I also read on there where you wanted to eliminate rumors. The rumor is that this is a job being made for Suzanne McGuire. Now, if we want to put the rumors out there, let's put it out there because it's out there.
I want to say something. It's important that we remember that when the School Board never, we are not in head of firing and firing unless it's for a good cause. So the rumors were going to squash right now, so.
That's good with the rumors.
Let's not put nothing out. We're talking about the position. That's the only thing.
Okay, I will, I will, I will move on from that.
Thank you.
Okay, now, the issue that I have with this, whether it's her or anybody, it's not fair because I am, I am convinced that if we do it the right way, by sitting here and going over it as a Board and making sure our vision is shared between all of us, a couple of more weeks ain't going to make a difference. So we can go ahead and look at how it will affect the various department and make sure everybody get a fair deal. Now, if we don't do this, if we don't do it as a Board, we are, all we are doing is rearranging furniture on the Titanic.
Okay. Ms. Boynton, did you have anything to add?
Well, we're really talking this, we're not, Mrs. Boy.
This is a, let me just share this with you. You got a, a Community and Development Engagement for a person from Hillsborough County and this is very thorough. It's specific in terms of what an Engagement Person actually do and I gave that to you tonight for us to say, hey, let's go to, let's go to administrative retreat and not only look at, at what we are asking, asking for a Director in charge of this, but to be specific, how it will affect what we are doing and we, and let's look at what we can look at in terms of what are the rest of the things that will be coming from Dr. Mayor that will be asking us to vote on. And I'm going to tell you, this is not an emergency.
I understand. Ms. Boynton, did you, did you want to share anything or are you good?
Sometimes when, I don't want to say anything but don't make you think against you, but I remember in two thousand and fourteen, as I was a Chair, and I put this up and I asked Mr. Nancy to be over this, to lead this. And when I became, when I, after I was not the Chair, you became the Chair. And you were not, you stood there and you made sure that Nancy Stacy could not really do because we, everything was, there was so much that put together, Mr. James. It was, I mean, it maybe because two, two, two years ago that they put this together and they had, maybe it doesn't look like it has in this school, but they came together. They even had, I think Mr. Stacy went to Orange County.
Went everywhere.
She, we went everywhere and we talked and some of these people, same people, they used things to talk to and I just, I like, sometimes, and maybe our, our county doesn't have the same, the money, either the funds for this, you know? Maybe we don't, but I think what they, what they put together, what they did, as I listened to them and that because of the Chair, we could not run in and talk to Mr. Stacy this, 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 but I saw she went different, different to people, people who understand, not just understand what the, the parents, but they also knew what they had to come together and make sure that this job description was something that we would need and this is what we're about. We're about, we're voting that we do have this job, job, descrip, describe it, excuse me, but we're getting, that's, this is what's far. And I, I think, I think I looked at all the people that came to it to work on this and work with Mr. Stacy and even worked with Dr. Mayor, came in and worked this so that this would be something. I think they have the thoughts to what a job description really is. I really do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. McCall, did you have anything else to add?
I just, in looking at this, there are no fundraising responsibilities in this one. I'm saying I'm not, I don't like the fundraising aspect of this. I don't think it fits with this position and I don't think it ought to be at the salary level. I still think that if the leadership at the schools are doing what they need to do, I know Stanton Weir still is doing a great job with their family nights and they are increasing their attendance and this may be a position that came out of the Public Policy Institute. I happened to attend that breakfast where Mr. Lawrence was speaking. I don't disagree that the family element is a huge part of the problem. I'm just saying I have a problem with the job description and the salary that it's at. I, I would like a little more information on detailed information and I think we need to, to really wait until the staffing plan and add it in that.
Okay. Do we even, yeah.
I'll just say that many times, Mr. James, over the last four years, when I talked about something from another district, you quickly told me this is Marion County, you don't care about them. So I'm telling you right now, Hillsborough is a totally different socioeconomic area. They don't even have the same issues that we have here. It's completely different. And as far as people not having education leadership, Mr. James, Bill Gates and Steve Jobs didn't even have an AA degree and they ran the largest computer businesses in the world. Barely got out of high school, one of them, got kicked out several times. So, and therefore, education leadership degree has absolutely nothing to do with this. I don't even know where that came from, but it's time to move. It's time to not waste another single moment before improving the situation for the parents and children in Marion County and I'd like us to call the question.
Okay.
Well, we.
Do I have a second?
Wait a minute. Didn't I, didn't I ask?
Excuse me. It was called a question and it's been seconded.
But I.
No, sorry.
Mr. Lake, didn't I, didn't I?
Question's been called.
But didn't I ask for, didn't I put a motion to table this?
No, you didn't get a second. Didn't.
Was it called for a second?
So we're going to, we're going to move along.
I didn't hear that you had asked to table.
That was the first thing I said.
He did, but we have a consensus, I believe, and as a Chair, I believe that it's important that we do not get in the way of this new Superintendent who I clearly remember her standing before us about a year ago when this initiative was all taking place. And Mr. James, you did already say that it is a position that we do need or at one point earlier this evening, you said that. Ms. Boynton, you hit the nail on the head when you said that families are valuable. Families are the most important resource to our students and I am in full support of voting for this tonight and I think it's time for us to move on. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those that oppose, like sign. And the motion passed, three, two.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion to approve data sharing security agreement with the Department of Education, Office of Student Financial Assistance? May I have a motion in a second?
Okay.
By Ms. Boynton, seconded by Ms. McCall. Dr. Mayor?
Thank you. Mr. McGowan is here this evening to give you some background on this. I understand that there may be some concerns about the sharing of data, so he will address your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Mayor, Board Members. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address your concerns and questions regarding this data sharing agreement. And before I get to what the agreement is and what that entails, I would like to just spend a few minutes on why that's being requested. And I won't follow this information I've given to you point by point, but I want to point out a couple. And I'm, I won't follow, uh, this information I've given to you point by point, but I wanna point out a, a couple, um, items. One, as you all know, the Florida financial aid application, better known as the Bright Futures application, is, is filled out by our students annually, and it's demographic information. Students can fill it out in a computer lab at the school site. There's no parent information needed. The FAFSA, the Federal Application for Federal Student Aid, is a federal application, and it's a needs-based, unlike the Bright Futures, which is merit-based, their grades, their, um, test scores, et cetera. So, the FAFSA is a needs-based application, so they're gonna look at financial information. Due to that, um, our schools have always struggled with being able to assist students um, as much as they would like to, because they don't have access to that financial information. So, um, a lot of that is, is done with the parent and the student at home. So, I'll, I'll back up and say that since August, one of our goals in our office to support school counselors is to encourage them to look at, um, resources and tools they can use to promote post-secondary planning with their students. And one of the goals we've set for them is FAFSA completion. Um, on the second page of your handout, you'll see the last two years, in fourteen, fifteen, thirty-one percent of our seniors completed the FAFSA, and last year, thirty percent. We've been working, um, with the Florida College Access Network to promote some resources and tools for counselors to use, and our goal is to increase that, um, by five percent. And this data sharing agreement, um, we found is available through, um, the Florida Department of Education's Office of Student Financial Assistance, which handles the Bright Future Scholarship, has a, um, agreement through the U.S. Department of Education through a FAFSA initiative to, um, promote FAFSA completion, um, that will now allow us to view the completion status of the FAFSA for students. Now, when I say completion status, that is all we'll be able to, that's all the data that DOE will be giving us. We won't see the actual FAFSA application, the parent fills out, their financial information. We'll be able to see three items. They've completed it, they have not, or it's incomplete. And that would allow our counselors to run reports from that data, call those students in, have conversations, encourage them to complete. Uh, as you all know, several of our schools have financial aid nights, uh, where they'll invite, um, member, you know, financial aid officers from the College of Central Florida to come out and assist parents in completing the FAFSA on-site. And so, this would help the schools target those students who have not completed and encourage them to do so. As far as the agreement, um, this is an agreement through the FAFSA initiative at the federal level um, that the Florida DOE has adopted. And this agreement is required to be signed for us to receive that information. In talking and, and reading through the agreement, and in talking with representatives at, um, the Office of Student Financial Assistance, um, this is a, a one-way street of data. Um, this is FAFSA information that they're giving to us. We are not giving any student data to them. Um, this solely gives us the ability to see who's completed, who has not. That's all we can tell, but it will help us to help those students. I would like to point out on page three, the, the last slide, is a screenshot that, um, the representative at DOE sent to me as an example of what it would look like. This is the secure Bright Futures website that our school counselors currently have access to, that shows them if they've, if they've completed the Bright Futures application. And if you notice, the last column, it says FAFSA submitted. If we're able to approve the agreement and we have this access, that is the column that will be added. And you can see, that's the only thing that's added. So, we'll see, again, complete, incomplete, or none. And that'll be the information that our counselors have to, to meet with those students. And I did attach the agreement as well, in case you needed a copy, but I'm open to any questions you might have.
Are there, Ms. Stacy?
I, I wanna thank you, because I, I call, we hear so much about data sharing, and it's a real problem. We don't really like data going to the federal government. We don't know what they're doing with it. And thank you so much for researching it thoroughly for me so that I could vote for, vote for this tonight.
That's right. Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna just add that I am not voting for this tonight, because it is an initiative from the U.S. DOE. Um, I look at it as a form of data mining. The FAFSA is something that, um, is up to the parents. When you mentioned that the college would help, well, there's a lot of personal information with them, so unless they bring that information with them to the college, I'm not quite sure how they could really help them do that. It asks personal questions, such as your socials, your driver, how much money. I mean, there's a lot of information, um, that the FAFSA requires. Also, the deadline, I did look, it was June thirtieth, uh, twenty eighteen, or is it twenty seventeen? So, um, you know, they opened this up in October. I do know that schools do a good job of ha, having, um, information nights where the parents can come in and, and they discuss it. They also discuss it with the children. I look at it as, um, we're kind of, it, to me, it's a data mining. And so, I'm just expressing that.
Okay, and that was my concern. But you shared with me that we can't see any of the report. All we can see is whether they've done it or not. We can't see the report.
But is it really, is it our business if the parent has done it or not? And if they don't, what are we to do? You know, what, it, to me, things happen in small steps, so what's? I'm just throwing that out there. I will vote no, you know, I just wanted you guys to be aware.
I guess, some of the kids don't know if they're, like, for the guidance counselors to help the student do it, if they, I felt like, I mean, this is just my personal opinion, that if they could pull it up, 'cause I talked to Mr. McGowan at Great Lakes today, if they could pull it up and at least see if the parent's done it, then that's good. And if it doesn't, if it says it's not completed, that, that tells them that. Because some of the parents might not even understand all that stuff. And if they can contact the parent and say, you've done it, but it's not completed, you need to go back and do that. Um, we don't know what's not complete, but something's not, and they need to go back and, and work on it. Or if the kid says, yeah, my mom did it, and, you know, and they can just look and say, no, I'm sorry, it's not been completed. We can't really work with you on this part until this is done. That's all they can see is whether it's, whether it's been done or not. And it kinda gives a school, instead of having the guessing game where the parent's going, yes, it's done, the kid's going, and we've got guidance counselors trying to help these kids fill these things, get this stuff done, and they're not being honest with them, and they're not being whatever. How can we help them if we don't even know if they've really filled it out? And I just felt like, I mean, my opinion, I'm with you on the federal government intrusion. And, um, and I'm gonna kick myself in the rear, if this ends up, we really can see the FAFSA stuff, 'cause we're not supposed to be able to. It's just, 'cause right now, we're doing this with the DOE, 'cause with the Florida DOE, there are forms that they have, whatever it is that we fill out for them. I guess the Florida Bright Futures and all that kinda stuff, it's already like that. It tells us whether it's been completed, right? Is that all we can see?
Yes.
So, when we go on there, that's all we can see. And I, I asked him, I said, well, is the federal government gonna see anything back? Is this a one-way street? And that's where he checked. He said, it's, it's just stuff we're gonna get. They're not getting anything back. And that's what I was real clear on. But I can see if I was a guidance counselor, really frustrating. I have this kid that's come in and, um, and saying, well, my mom said she did it, and, and all she has to do is go, ch, 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 honey, it hasn't been done yet.
What is she gonna do, is my question. It is not up to the student to do it. It's the parents.
It is. It's up to the parent. But the guidance counselors help with some of this, I guess, guidance stuff, you know?
And, and Ms. King, you're exactly right. At that point, all we would be able to do is
Say it's not been done.
Buy and encourage them, but at that point, it would still be up to them. But it would help the counselors work with the students and encourage them to not leave free money on the table.
And that was my question. This is, if these students don't complete this, if these parents don't complete this, then the financial aid is totally out the window. So, it's a benefit for the guidance counselors to be able to see if the form is completed. Because, I mean, that, that would, um...
And, and on the concern, I can say that this is not a DOE mandate. This is not a requirement. This is something that we're looking for to give a tool to counselors, and it does say in the agreement that at any point, we can cancel this.
Okay.
And they would revoke the access that we would be able to see it. So, if there was a concern, then that could occur.
How many students, do you know the percentage of students that did go to college last year? 'Cause you mentioned thirty percent only did.
Thirty percent, um, completed the FAFSA.
Right.
Um, I don't have on me the percent.
So, you don't know how many students even go to college? What percentage of our students actually go?
Not offhand.
So, when we're looking at all this data, we may be even looking at students that may have other intentions. And, um, personally, I've filled out a few.
Most of them are going to the Bright, Bright Future.
The Bright Future, right. Well, this is something different.
But that's, if you read, this is what he's saying. This is, most of them going right through there, um...
Now, we just haven't.
Can you explain the difference between Bright Futures and FAFSA?
Sure, yes, ma'am. Bright Futures is a state aid application, which is merit-based, um, which means it relies on their GPA, their test scores, where the FAFSA is a need-based scholarship, and it's the federal application, which is why this initiative came from the federal level. And, um, because it's need-based, it's solely based on economic need. It doesn't matter if they have perfect scores on the ACT or in a four-point-oh. It's a need-based, whereas the Bright Futures is simply how well they've done in school.
What I see, Ms. King, is, like, if a student goes in and is taking time with a guidance counselor, or like you said, on the night that they helped the kids with it, and he's in there, he did not do what he's supposed to do. He was supposed to get his mama to do that, and the guidance counselor's told her, and he didn't even take the stuff home. He goes, well, I left it on the counter. I know she did it. Instead of that guidance counselor having to like, okay, before I can help you, we've gotta have this done, checking with the mother, all she's gotta do is pull up on the computer, boom, she either did it or she didn't. Honey, bye, next, next person, come on in.
It's simply a tool for advising. Once the advising, that counseling piece happens with the student and the parent, then it would still be on them at that point.
All right, and I'll just add that it's not paperwork. It's done on the computer, just, you know. Okay, Ms., Dr. Mayor.
Just some information for consideration, uh, that the class of twenty sixteen earned twenty point five million in college financial aid, and the application is a huge part of that success, so just for consideration.
And I agree that it is. I'm just, a, as a board member, I'm expressing my opinion that, um, anytime that we're looking to see what parents are doing, that is done by a, a federal initiative, and I'm just expressing that. So, we're gonna move on.
And normally, I'm the same way. We're cut from the same cloth in that way. Tonight, you may be kicking me in the butt in a couple of years, and you get to do it if I screw up doing this, so.
Ms. McGowan, I, I know you reached out to us and asked if we had any questions, and you did an excellent job. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and those that oppose, like sign. And the motion passed four, one. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of thirty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents? As twenty-one hundred to Bellevue High School from the ROTC Booster Club, electronic piano valued, valued at twelve hundred to Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary School from Teresa Adams, twelve hundred to Fort McCoy from DonorsChoose.org, a thousand to Howard Middle School from the town of Lady Lake, six thousand, thirty-nine dollars and eighteen cents to Madison Street Elementary School from the Madison Street Academy PTA, four thousand, two dollars, twenty, or ninety-eight cents to Maplewood Elementary School from the Maplewood Elementary PTO, one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars to Marion County Public Schools K through twelve academic services from the Silver River Museum, two thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars to Shady Hill Elementary School from the Shady Hill Elementary PTA, twenty-five hundred dollars to Silver River Museum from Duke Energy, twenty-five hundred to Westport High School from Donate Well, twelve hundred to Westport High School from Next Steps Fitness, six iPads Pros valued at four thousand, nine hundred and six dollars, fifty-one cent, cents to Westport High School from DonorsChoose.org. May I have a motion in a second?
So, move.
Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Ms. Boynton. Ms. McCall, would you like to thank?
I would love to thank, um, all of the PTAs and PTOs that work so hard, that work tirelessly to raise this money for their schools. Thank you so much. To the other organizations who support our schools, we, we greatly, greatly appreciate. And we could not do what we do without you, so, so continue to do the work. But I know those PTAs and those PTOs, I know the hours that they put in, and we are so grateful, and that's good parent support.
Great, thank you. Okay, I put the cart before the horse, and I had Ms. McCall speak before we voted. And I ultimately hit the computer and hit nay, so if we continue.
Oh, dear, Ms. King.
Okay.
You just voted wrong tonight.
I should, okay, so is it up for you guys, or?
Everybody should have it up.
Okay.
Mine's not up yet.
You've already voted, Mrs. Stacy.
Okay, never mind.
It's not letting you change.
It's not, nothing's.
Here it goes. Okay, I've got it now.
Okay, and the motion.
I will fix that. I can fix it, ma'am.
And the motion passed.
Actually, five, zero.
I saw it hit.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, January nineteenth, twenty seventeen, at nine AM. The purpose of this work session is to, is the annual review for charter schools and code of con, student conduct, as well as to receive an alternative program for a follow-up report. As a reminder, schools and district officers will be closed on Monday, January sixteenth, twenty seventeen. Board members, now is our time, if we have any reports, concerns, or comments, and we will begin with Ms. McCall.
Yes, I'm very excited to say that Friday morning, I will be representing us in Tampa at the Florida, um, Music Educators Association Conference to honor, uh, Principal Ryan Bennett from Shady Hill, who has been selected as Principal of the Year, a music award of some type. Uh, Mrs. Stacy was nice enough to let me go. It is her school, but I have a grandson that actually sings in Mrs. Collins' chorus, and so, I am thrilled to go and, uh, for this honor for Mr. Bennett. Thank you.
Ms. Boynton? Okay, Mr. James?
Just some things I, I just need to share with you. First of all, I'd like to commend those students that participated in We the People. And, uh, We the People is where kids actually get a chance to see how, um, the legislature worked, federal government, et cetera. And, uh, when I look at Doug and the people that he, uh, he worked with in terms of that, and all the kids that were involved, they were really top-notch. And I would like to take a mo, a moment to just talk with, uh, the group that worked on the student code of conduct. It got feisty, it got interesting, and, and I think you will like some of the results of, uh, of what occurred in the, in the work session that we had over at, uh, at AMT, uh, MT, uh, MTC, Marion Technical College. Some things that I want, wanna caution the board on. I have been on this board, well, I've been in the school district since Skip Archibald's time. And we established some things that was very professional, in terms of how we, uh, identify employees and giving them an opportunity uh, to at least advance themselves in the school's district. I am concerned about that, in the sense that I do not see where we, where, where, where there is an opportunity for a position in our school district, was the principal, assistant principal, that we have an opportunity to, uh, interview all of the, all the contestants, all of the employees that are eligible for that. I haven't seen that in the last few months. And when I say that, we had an administrative pool. The superintendent can still choose whoever she want, but the people that were qualified had an opportunity to pu, uh, put in an application, and that it was a group that inter, uh, that was interviewed. Let me say this, too. If we don't do something like this, whether it's the position of directors or whatever, you create a bad feeling throughout your school district, because they know, they know, if they got a shot at it, but they also want to get a face-to-face visit with the people, so they can be in line for something. And I am, I am concerned about that, and I'm concerned more about the messages that we sent. At this point, I can say what I'm saying, because this is my concern. I walked in and I met the school superintendent's attorney. That was the first time. I would have loved to have shook her hands at some point prior to me walking in. My question, in my mind, how many other candidates was interviewed for that job? I don't need to know that, because I recognize it's a superintendent thing. But I will tell you this. If we don't start looking at some protocol and looking at how we are dealing with these positions, we will, we will create a, a, a atmosphere where everybody is leery of the next. is leery of the next person. And I'm concerned, because I am the senior person here, and when I say, "Let's table something and work with something," it was more to give everybody an opportunity to have some more input, because it would not have made a difference. You probably would have gotten a vote. And this is one of the things that I'm concerned about, to the new people that are coming in and taking over the school district. Guys, y'all gotta, gotta be careful, because you, when you hire one, you got another whole line that say, "Hey, did I get a chance to even to come out of the dugout?" And maybe the people that don't know baseball, if I'm not even getting a chance to sit in the dugout when the, when the, when the game is being played, it's a sad thing. So I will caution our board, let's do not abdicate anything, because I'm still not sure what I'm issue on is, as a school district. Have we met as a board to decide this is the direction we're going? You can't shut me off this time, because I'm talking about concerns, and this is one of my concerns, is I, as a board, we have not sat down as a collective group and said, "This is what we want to do." And so this is what this is about today. Thank you.
Ms. Stacy?
Okay. I wasn't really gonna have any concerns, but I do have one now. We're individual board members, and if we ask to table, and the majority of the board doesn't want to table, they should not have to table just because you're the senior board member, Mr. James, that they don't agree with you. And when you stated that this position was for a specific person, that offended me, because I worked tirelessly, weekly, with a committee of teachers, people from the community, medical people, through my entire summer, canceled vacation. I never really knew this person that you mentioned, except I knew that she did great stuff with Stuff the Bus, I knew she did great stuff with veterans, and I would see her at those, I didn't know who she was. If this position had been hired last year, that was not anybody that I was even considering, and I'll be honest with you, who I thought would do a great job, and it was Mr. Kleimer. That's who I would have liked to have brought back to run my program.
Okay, is that a rumor?
So therefore, that is not a rumor, that's a fact. That's who I wanted to do it.
You called a name, didn't you?
So therefore, I'm offended that you implied that this whole thing was done, because there were a lot of us that worked hard for one specific person, because that is not even the person that I even thought of, so let's put that to rest, thank you.
Mr. Lake?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Ms. Blockhead? Dr. Mayor?
Yes. Yesterday, you and I traveled to Orlando to attend a coalition meeting of districts, school boards, and Ms. McCall, you joined us there for that meeting. As Mrs. King and I rode there, and she drove and got us there safely, thank you, and back, as we approached Orlando at a specific intersection, there was quite the backlog of traffic, and of course, we were quite nervous about that, but you had left early enough, we really didn't have to worry. But the traffic kept backing up. Then we started to see many different sheriff vehicles and OPD, and we're like, "Oh, my gosh, there must have been a wreck." Well, there wasn't a wreck, there was a shooting. There was a shooting at the Walmart in Orlando, and we all know what happened with that Orlando police officer who was killed there. We moved on to the meeting. During the meeting, as Superintendent of Orange County sat next to me, she kept getting up, coming back, whispering to her board member, they would leave, they would come back. Of course, we all had our phones, and so we were getting news alerts that the Orlando police officer had died, and another Orlando sheriff had been injured later, passed away, as they were pursuing the suspect. Seventeen schools were in lockdown. Superintendent Barbara Jenkins, who sat next to me, carried on very professionally, and as we left, we all were shocked that we were so close to that event. So tonight, Officer Hunt, when we came in, it was, it was just nice to see you here, as you are every week, and our heart goes out to you and your brethren, and we just appreciate everything that you and, and all of you do for us to keep us safe. Words that are so simple, but mean so much, so we thank you for that. And this week, Florida Governor Rick Scott issued a resolution naming January 9th to the 13th as Florida First Responder Appreciation Week. So our schools are honoring first responders, and thank you, Kevin, for putting this together so quickly. We got the resolution one afternoon, he had everything organized, of course, by the next day. But from today through Friday, different elementary schools will be honoring our first responders, and although it will take a minute, I would like to mention every school, because it is so important. Today, Bellevue Elementary honored the Bellevue Police Department, as well as Danellan Elementary honored the Danellan Fire Rescue. Tomorrow, Wednesday, College Park will honor Ocala Fire Rescue. Wednesday, Fessedin will honor Marion County Fire Rescue. Thursday, Danellan Middle is honoring the Danellan Police Department, Wyamina Park is honoring the Ocala Police Department, and Friday, Emerald Shores will be honoring the Marion County Sheriff's Office, and of course, Kevin has all that on the website. So I encourage all of us to just take a moment, anytime you see a first responder, just thank them, as we do you.
Might I add one thing?
Please.
We are awaiting a response from Florida Highway Patrol, they do have a district command officer in Ocala, waiting to hear back from Captain Lamont. Once they respond, Anthony Elementary will be the school that appreciates them, because they service that school and their jurisdiction. Didn't want them to be left out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Two of our junior ROTC units were recognized for their exemplary service to the Druid Hills United Methodist Church Pumpkin Patch, which is always a happy thing to pass every, every October, and Mr. Bauer, the coordinator, sent letters to Mr. Carson, the principal of Forest High School, and Mr. Curly, the principal of Vanguard High School, recognizing just the dedication of those young people to organizing that event and caring about it, so we are very pleased about that. Right before the meeting, Dr. Grantham wanted me to let you all know that in our four turnaround schools, all teaching vacancies have been filled. So those are priority, and those are filled. And the plan is to have the remainder of teacher vacancies, which are down to 28 or 32, depending on which line of paperwork you look at, one week from today. So those are our priority. We want to also thank not only Dr. Grantham's team for organizing that, but thank you to the Marion Education Association, who has worked very closely with us, making sure that we follow the lines of the contract and are in line, in compliance with that, so thank you to them. And now it's time for books. Things were, I was able to get my piles of books into the office this week, and as they sit in their crates, ready to be put away, I had four visitors come in, and each of them noticed this book. Two of them were our deputy superintendents, and two were other, and they, actually, all four were gentlemen, who remembered where the sidewalk ends, and each shared a particular poem from this book and the happy memories that it brought back. And so I say again to, to our students, to everybody watching, that that is exactly what a book should do, it should bring that happy memory back, because life is simply too short to read books that are boring. You may have seen this book, and again, I wink at the students out there, that this book, A Monster Calls, is a new release movie. So I encourage you students to investigate the book before going to see the movie, because the book, I'm sorry, it's always better than the movie, it always is. And this is one of those books that sit on your heart and will stay with you, so it's a very emotional read, so be prepared for that. One final book is one that I came across from the New York Times, they had mentioned it, and it is called Language at the Speed of Sight: How We Read, Why So Many Can't, and What Can Be Done About It. So it is some research into our ways of teaching reading, are they truly valid? Are we doing what we've always done, because that's how we've done it? And this is one of those, those books where you read it and you go, "Well, I don't know." And those are often the best ones to read, because they make you question whether or not your held beliefs are such. So I encourage you to take a look at that, if you want to borrow it, let me know. So, thank you for letting me share.
Okay. And I would just like to remind everybody that attendance does count, and we're back from school, and Happy New Year, we're back from school, we're back from home, and going to school, Happy New Year. And just remember, it's very important that you're in the classroom and you're learning, and teachers, it's important that you're there in front of your students, because next to their parents, you're their next best teacher. And I'm gonna end that, and I just want to make a comment. Mr. James, you said that "I can't shake you this time," and I want to make it clear, wait a second, I'm speaking. You said you can't shake me this time, but I just want to make clear that my intention was not to shake you. My intention as a chairman is to make sure that we are, or that we are having a productive meeting, and I realized that I had consensus from the three board members. And as a board, at this point, I, I do not want to get in their way. They're building momentum, they're starting to grow, they're starting to move in the right direction, and the last thing that I want to do is be a stumbling block for them. I want to clear the path, if I can, rather than table something and drag something along, deal with it and move, and move on, and that was my intention with that.
May I just respond to you, since you called my name?
Well, I was just responding to what you said.
Well, I was not responding, I don't know what you, what, what was this in rate relationship?
Because you said, you looked at me and said, "I can't shake you," because when you were saying something, you were like, "You can't shake," in that you had comment to speak. That's what you said. If you want to later on, go back and look at the video, you'll probably see it.
I don't want to go, I don't want to go back to that now.
Okay.
My whole point in reference to whatever, my whole point is that we are moving in a direction, I have made it very clear to Mr. Grantham and everybody else, that I'm on board with what he's trying to do. My only thing that I am saying to this board is that if we're moving in an orderly manner, it should not be something that's an emergency that's not relating to students. And I don't know nothing about, I can't recall, and I hope, Brenda, you give that to me, where I said something about shaking, she was shaking me, or whatever, I'm shaking her.
Shouting you, or something like that.
What was it?
Shouting you, or you can't shut me up now, or something, sorry, some comment like that. But anyway, I think, let's go.
Yep, okay. So we're gonna move along. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through December 9th, 2016. In addition to one request, have any other parents or guardians submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
Not at this time.
Not at this time. So I moved it to 24?
Yeah, flip that over and scrub right there.
Okay. In order to protect the privacy of the student, I will be calling a brief recess to clear the room prior to discussing a student discipline matter. Parents will then have an opportunity to address the board. This is a not, this is not a due process hearing, it is only an opportunity for parents to express their concerns. Prior to the board considering the superintendent's recommendation for expulsion, parents have had an opportunity to discuss options available to them. If the student is expelled, the school board staff remains available to talk with the parents about the alternative educational programs available for the expelled student. This concludes the televised and business portion of the meeting at 7:16.